Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, boy. There it is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that's from, yeah, the other day. Yeah. Okay, good evening, everyone. Marked the meeting open at 7:09. And we will start off with public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment. We will move on to item number four. Approved minutes from the May 2, 2017, regular meeting. Have a motion to do so. Motion by Nicole, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes 4-0. Item number five, approved minutes from the April 28, 2017, ordinance committee meeting. This is for Nicole and Karen. You just received those tonight? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Motion by Nicole, second by Karen. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes 3-0. Under First Selectment's report, tomorrow we'll be presenting to Standard and Poor's in Boston. So it'll be myself, Doug, Tony, and Rory. We each have different parts of the presentation that we're going to do with the state of our state. Our goal at this point now is to maintain our AA+ with a positive outlook rating. The state has been downgraded by Fitch, by Moody's, and by Standard and Poor's all in the last week. That's putting a tremendous amount of pressure on ratings for the towns and cities. But I think we're very well-prepared with the presentation that we've put together and the steps that we've taken over the last five years. I mean, we're still trying to get the AAA rating. That's still our goal. But if we come out with the reaffirming of our current status, that would certainly be a very positive, positive thing. The governor released his budget, or his updated budget, I should say, on Monday. That would provide the town of Seymour a $1.1 million hole. That even takes into account the $700,000 that we had put aside in the Mel rate stabilization fund on conversations with people up in Hartford. I don't know how realistic the governor's budget is, but that's what we could be looking at. I know that the Republicans and Democrats released budgets today. I've been going through those. And I think the final outcome will be somewhere in the middle once negotiations start, I believe, tomorrow night is when those are starting, so. Contract negotiations for the clerks and public works is ongoing. It's taken substantially longer than we had anticipated. Warren and I have a meeting scheduled for Friday morning. We'll be receiving counter proposals. The administrators' union outside of contract has all but agreed to some changes to their health insurance. They're being very proactive with that. So hopefully, we will finish that up on Thursday, and I'll present those updated changes to you on our meeting on June 6, which is our next meeting for approval. So, you know, I commend the administrators for recognizing that the state is facing the challenges that it is, and that will be pushed down to the town. And the administrators have come forward to try to help the town as best they can. So I certainly commend them working with us outside of contract. Okay, so that closes the First Selectment's report. And at this point, we'll move on to item number seven, which is discussion, take possible action regarding OPEB trust fund. So we have some people to present tonight. Doug is here, obviously, Rory, and then Catherine. There you are. Catherine works for the company that we will be contracting with to do this work. So Catherine, would you mind just come up? Maybe tell us a little bit about the company, a little background on OPEB trusts, and then we'll kind of go through what we're looking at.
So I have a book, like, it's very long, and I don't intend to talk about it, so don't panic. So I'll see if you want to get it. Good evening. My name is Catherine Canny. I work with Public Agency Retirement Services. We call ourselves PARs. Our name pretty much says what we do. We're work with strictly public agencies to assist them with funding their retirement services. If you think about it, the promises they make to their employees. And I'm here tonight to talk about OPEB. And OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. Think about it as other than pension benefits. It's your healthcare, whatever that package is that you promise to your employees upon their retirement. So we have developed through, over the past 20 years, a Section 115 Multiple Employer Trust. And that is a trust that's been set up for the benefit of the retirees. And a lot of agencies, towns, municipalities, at this point are establishing OPEB trusts on their own. That's to pre-fund the obligation. And by pre-funding, your investment earnings and your assets you've set aside will help mitigate those costs down the road that you're seeing. So the challenge is that establishing a trust on your own is very costly, time-consuming, and it's a burden on your staff. And most entities have very limited staff. They're already stretched to their limits. So our program is an established trust that any agency can join. They can sign up and participate in. So the benefit first that they receive is that the trust is established, so they don't incur the legal costs of setting up a trust. We have a section, we have an IRS private letter ruling, so our trust is protected and certified by the IRS. That is a benefit that is passed on to our members, so that would also be a cost that you would not incur. And the trust is ready to go when you want to join it. So that's the legal aspect that's checked a box. We also have gathered two investment partners. We have US Bank that acts as the trustee and custodian of the funds, and Vanguard that we've set up for pools to invest in, and they're highly diversified portfolios. And by joining our program, you get to participate in that trust at a lower cost because we have economies of scale. These trusts are set up with, you know, an intention of a minimum balance of $250 million. PARs has $1 billion under assets. So we've achieved that level, and so that we can pass those savings on to the participating members. So that's really the program we provide is we manage and have developed the trust that's in place. We have a legal and compliance department that continues to monitor these programs as they go along, so we're able to report back to you. That's not a drain on your legal counsel. And then we have designated portfolio managers that manage the program for you. So the benefits of establishing our trust is that we are what is called GASB compliant. GASB 45 was a statement that came out in 2006 and required that all OPEB trust programs be protected from creditors, dedicated to retiree healthcare, and irrevocable. And our trust fund does actually manage to meet all those established factors. That's a little bit about our program, and if you had any questions.
Does anybody have a question on the program itself? And this is one of the biggest things that S&amp;P was stressing, that we had outstanding a way to address our outstanding liability. So we looked at self-funded programs. And then we also looked at this group-type program in the review. Doug looked at it, Tony, Rory, myself, Warren reviewed contracts. We thought that this would be the best way to go. It would allow the town to have the expertise that PARs brings to the table, plus their partners, obviously with Vanguard and US Bank acting as the trustee. Those are reputable names. So we thought that that would put the town in the best possible position to move forward. So we wanted to give a presentation to you because what we're going to do is I'm going to read a resolution which is going to allow us to essentially start the process to open the trust. And then we will work on an investment strategy, I guess, for lack of a better term, and different things like that in the coming weeks. So any questions in general? Everyone comfortable with what OPEB is? Our outstanding OPEB liability is, Doug, $36 million, did you say? $42 million? Not to be exact, but that's what we're looking at.
So if I could just offer some math to take into consideration, you have $36 million, what's called an unfunded liability. And when you're at your meeting tomorrow, and the agencies and your auditors start to look at the finances of your town, they assign what's called a discount rate. And discount rate, think about, that's the cost at which you would borrow money. So currently, you're operating under a pay-as-you-go standard, which is you pay your retiree healthcare, go. You're not saving up assets to apply in the long run. So that's about a 4% discount rate. We find that agencies that establish a trust, a GASB compliant trust, and then develop a policy of how they're going to fund it, and maybe it's a line item, maybe it's a meals tax, maybe it's, they're going to look at free cash each year, but they have an intent to fund, and they establish that. And they participate in a diversified portfolio, which is what we offer. They see their discount rate increase to 3%. So you could be looking at your discount rate going from 4% to 7%. Why that matters in this situation for OPEB is that next year, your OPEB liability is going from a footnote to it's going on your financial sheet. So that's going to be that balance, and this discount rate is going to be impacting you. When your discount rate goes up each 1%, your valued unfunded liability reduces by 10 to 15%. So for each increase in your discount rate, that $36 million, you could see a decrease of 10 to 15%. So that is a substantial savings to you in this program. So we're finding that we have participants that are going from a 4% to 6, 6.5, 7%. And that's based on when they look at, we're looking at expected rate of return based on this portfolio of about 7.5% over 30 years. That's just sort of a bonus to when you're looking to bond. This is what these things impact for you.
Any other questions, comments? Doug, Rory, anything you want to add? Anything we missed? No? Doug, anything? Okay, all right. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, so I'll read the resolution. And then we'll go from there. Okay, so whereas it is determined to be the best interest of the town of Seymour to participate in the PARs Public Agency Post-Retirement Healthcare Plan Trust to fund post-employment benefits for its employees as specified in the town's policies and/or applicable collective bargaining agreements, and whereas the town is eligible to participate in the program, a tax-exempt trust and plan performing an essential governmental function within the meaning of Section 115 of the Internal Revenue Code as amended and the regulations issued thereunder, and is tax-exempt trust under the relevant statutory provisions of the state of Connecticut, and whereas the town's adoption and operation of the program has no effect on any current or former employee's entitlement to post-employment benefits, and whereas the terms and conditions of post-employment benefit entitlement, if any, are governed by contracts separate from and independent of the program, and whereas the town's funding of the program does not and is not intended to create any new vested right to any benefit nor strengthen any existed vested right, and whereas the town reserves the right to make contributions, if any, to the program, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby adopts the PARs Public Agency Post-Retirement Healthcare Plan Trust, including the PARs Public Agency Post-Retirement Healthcare Plan effective May 16, 2017. And the Board of Selectmen hereby appoints the Finance Director or his or her successor, or his or her designee, as the town's plan administrator for the program. And the town's plan administrator is hereby authorized to execute the PARs legal and administrative documents on behalf of the town and to take whatever additional actions are necessary to maintain the town's participation in the program and to maintain compliance of any relevant regulation issued or as may be issued, therefore authorizing him or her to take whatever additional action is required to administer the town's program. So can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented? Motion by Nicole. Second by Stephen. Is there any other discussions or comments? Warren, anything to add? Okay. Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Catherine. Doug? There you go. Okay, item number eight, discussion with Economic Development Director. Fred, the floor is yours. Would you mind talking into the mic just so the, your fans at home can hear you?
Good evening. Fred Messori, Economic Development Director. I just came to give my, I guess, update to the quarterly report that I submitted at the end of March. I provided a packet with the last report and then my monthly report that I gave to my EDC commission. And I've also included some photographs of the ongoing Greenway Trail Phase 1 project, which is about 45 days into construction. Happy to say that it's coming along very well. This has been a joint effort with funding coming from the state and federal government, town of Seymour contributing 20% of the costs. And we're working with our consultant, Mylona McBroom, who did the design work and also is doing the inspections. We've hired them to oversee the construction. We also partake in a bi-monthly or bi-weekly meeting with the contractor, DOT, the inspector, who's Mylona McBroom and ourselves, various city departments to keep the project moving along. Right now, from my understanding, we're ahead of schedule for the contracted term of 120 days. So that's exciting. Like any construction project, as you start the work, there were a couple of things that we had to work through. Probably most notably, some of the traffic changes to the patterns for rush hour traffics. But we worked closely with DOT and the Traffic Division of the Police Department and DOT and the contractor to assist in realigning some of the detour signs and also some of the traffic signalization, how to get adjusted. And I think since that has occurred, it's been going much more smoothly. And also, just in general, people's traffic patterns will change to adjust to any ongoing occurrences. But we're hoping to get that lane reopened on Route 67 Bridge as soon as the work completes on the corner of the intersection. The photographs I submitted just show you kind of my tour on May 10, and it kind of shows you where the retaining walls are going. A lot of the work is getting done at the intersection of Route 67 and the southbound on-ramp of Route 8. That's primarily where a majority of the traffic changes have occurred. The photographs will show you a new retaining wall system and some of the footings for the Greenway Trail that'll be going in. There'll also be some new signalization for pedestrians, bikers, and also vehicles that frequent that area. So unless there's any specific questions, I can move on to the next part. I do have a stopwatch on my report since I've heard a couple of comments that my reports are a little too lengthy. So I'm going to try to keep it under eight minutes, if possible. The other thing I wanted to update, end of March 29, we had a Fundamentals of Municipal Economic Development Forum that was presented by CIRC, the Connecticut Economic Resource Center of the state of Connecticut. It was hosted up at Basement Systems. We were fortunate enough to have a business partner to allow us to use their facilities, which was probably one of their best venues from what they indicated to us. They've been traveling throughout the state giving this forum to various towns that requested it. And they told me that we welcomed them with open arms, and it was one of the best venues to host it at. So I was proud to be able to pass that along to everybody. We had about 50 attendees, which was a great turnout. I thank Stephen from the board who made it. Right, weren't you there? Oh, you did. Okay, good, yeah.
He staffed it out.
Oh, he did, good. Oh, I thought I'd say, I'm sorry. Anyway, it was a good turnout. It went over kind of the fundamentals. I know Rory did send out the PowerPoint presentation to all of you via email if you want to look it over. It's probably the best way of viewing it since you could, some of the slides are a little small to read, but you could expand on that. The good thing is it did say a lot of the ideas and projects that we've been implementing over the last several years have supported the growth of economic development and also was, coincided very well with the state's overall economic development ideas to foster success in each community. So I think we're in a good position right now, and it just supported that. But it also discussed the roles of various individuals, from residents to various boards and commissions, what the town could do with certain ordinances if we wanted to. So the Economic Development Commission took a lot of what was reported, and they're going to probably do future discussions with CIRC to see how they could help implement any of the items that we might have not been working on that could be supportive of our goals that we've been working and implementing, but that could coincide with what the report states, so. Kurt and I, in May, or in April, met with the town of Hamden's Economic Development Director, Dale Krupp. Dale is in the process currently of implementing a business incubator. It's a former school and community center that's been decommissioned that was deeded over to the Economic Development Corporation for a dollar. And they're in the process of receiving funding to create it into a business incubator in town. It was an idea to visit and view for two reasons. We've discussed in the town the idea of possibly creating an economic development corporation. So it was a good idea to sit down with Dale, who oversees that corporation, which is a separate entity from the town. But he's also the Economic Development Director, so he has two roles in that town. So we sat down to discuss some of the ideas of what the corporation is being utilized for in Hamden, what kind of projects, the type of funding that's necessary for that. Also to look at the business incubator that's in the process of being constructed. Overall, it's about a $7 to $10 million project. The reason to view that was simply because we're, May 19, the recently shuttered Bank of America building in our downtown is going to be receiving bids on the future of that building. CBRE is the real estate firm that's handling the marketing of that building. And like I said, May 19 is when the bids are due for that project. It's an open bid. One of the ideas I had was possibly to create a regional business incubator for the valley here and using that building. A lot of the infrastructure that's there, it was a training center besides being a branch of Bank of America. And I thought that it might be an idea to partner up with the Bank of America, possibly in some partnership that they could donate the building to the town, and we can work with them into creating this incubator, not just for Seymour, but also for small businesses in the region to start off and then hopefully foster their growth and then eventually expand out of that space into maybe staying in town or in our regional communities here. I'm not sure at this time we're in the financial position to take on an endeavor, but it was a good meeting with Dale to at least discuss our options with it and be proactive. So that's just something I wanted to report. Recently spoke to some vacant property owners. One of them in particular was Kevin Cox, who owns a two-acre parcel on New Haven Road, 20 New Haven Road across from Webster Bank, to see if he had any ideas with his property. In the past, he really wasn't that motivated to do anything with it. He would be open to ideas for it, but wasn't in the position to want to sell it. I've had some inquiries from different realtors who would contact my office requesting some information on the owner. I would pass along the information or gather it and give it all over to Kevin to see if there could be something, if they had a potential tenant for the property. But at this time, it seems like it's status quo. But I know I've gotten a lot of inquiries on that property, and I try to keep a good thumb on it, but, you know, it's really up to the owner what they want to do with the property. And at this time, they just want to leave it as is. But they are accepting offers if somebody has any interest. I could take any questions that you may have. I think I've passed my eight-minute mark, so I don't want to go too much longer unless there's specific questions. I know that you requested me to be here, so.
Questions, comments? No?
You know, I've gotten some inquiries from the brokers that are handling the property because I have a good dialogue with them. There was some interest from a retailer on the corner parcel. I don't think they were able to make a layout work for the site. In the past, I've reported, that's a difficult corner. Even though there's a heavy traffic, it's out of traffic light. With the amount of setbacks in the topography, it'll make it a challenging site. And I think that the, at least the one retailer that I know is looking at it, the reports that I received from the broker who's handling the property that they passed on the site. But I don't think, you know, it's definitely being looked at, but with that one specific. But there's also been some corporate changing on the retailers as a whole. And I think they've pulled back on some other expansion plans across the nation, not just in Seymour because of online business and such, so. But that's the only thing that I've heard of other than what I reported regarding the Cox property, that there was some interest by a realtor who said he had a tenant possibly for it, but I'm not sure what talks happened after I put the two parties together. Also, with Trytown, I did not report. I know there's been some talk in the past that I just want to get everybody up to speed. They just finished the remediation of the parcels or the buildings that are vacant, that are shuttered there right now. They're still in the process of marketing that space to a potential re-user of it or re-adaptive user. And I believe they're going to leave another 40, 45 days worth of marketing. If nothing comes out of that, I believe at that point they're going to consider coming in to apply for demolition permits for those buildings. So I also wanted to report that. But the good thing is that they're now, they've been addressed environmentally, at least, and remediated from the items that needed to be to prepare it for either reuse and/or demolition. So those are important, you know, factors that had to be done. You're welcome. Anybody else?
Any other questions, comments? Stephen?
Sure. Thanks for coming, Fred.
Sure.
So you mentioned with the Bank of America property, it's probably not something we're going to be able to do anything with right now. Have you heard from anybody who is planning on making bids on it? Do you think we'll get bids on the property? Or they will get bids on the property, rather?
I've been working closely with the realtor in the sense of keeping a good line of communication. I know the realtor firsthand. I've worked with him on some other deals outside of Seymour, so I have a relationship with him. He did indicate that there was some interest, but did not go as far to tell me what type of use. I don't think he even knew at the time that it was viewed. We actually, as the town, went and viewed the property when it first became available. Well, first off, I reached out to them to speak about the parking in front on the track side that's being utilized to see if we could work some type of partnership to allow at least people to use it until it gets sold. And it is being used. So we're fortunate enough right now that it is being used. The parcel has something that I discovered during the process. The back parking lot is not entirely owned by Bank of America. There is a section of the property that is privately held, and there's a long-term land lease there. So that would go with the sale of the property as long as the lease is in effect, which I believe is to 2035. I believe is to 2035 if I'm not mistaken. And then it would have to be an option taken out on that land. When we viewed the property, there was a consideration to possibly move some departments there just to see the, like I said, the infrastructure that was there. There were some challenges to the building on the older section of the bank that were non-compliant to ADA and such, even though there's some beautiful parts of it. It did make it somewhat challenging and we as a town, at least the departments that we went to view, did not seem to find it feasible for us to move there. So... So yeah, I mean, I think there's been some interest, but I don't know specifically what the users would be.
Great. And so kind of along those lines, do you think the incubator idea is something after meeting with the Hampden Economic Development Director, is something that the town would and perhaps through your office would continue to pursue?
I think in the state of the... The state of Connecticut, to try to get the seed money necessary to foster something like that, I was not aware of the amount of money that Hampden was putting into it, meaning the overall project. Now, the building that they're using is in a much different state than this, so we could possibly lower the cost, but I just think financially, we're not in a position to do that, unfortunately. I thought it would be a great idea to use the building for that, but I think at this time, we're going to see what the market dictates and see what kind of, you know, responses to the bid that comes in on the 19th with Bank of America and obviously work with any developer that is interested. No one's contacted the town now in their due diligence, which is a little surprising, just to see if whatever their ideas were would comply with what our downtown regulations are and if we could offer any assistance. So...
How much of a hurdle are our regulations to a new business coming in there?
I mean, I don't think there's a hurdle. I just think that I'm not sure exactly what the reuse of that building would be to tell them emphatically if they could use it for what that is. I think overall, the internal system we have here with the various land use departments, building department, fire marshal department, if traffic's necessary, public works, we have an open policy to sit down with any business or developer that would want to come into town or expand into the town. And we do a pre-application meeting with them, with the various department heads, just to go over any concerns that may come up with their ideas to try to eliminate any added time or cost to the process. So I know that it's been received very well from various other businesses. For instance, Basement Systems, who recently completed one building, new expansion and is working on another building currently under construction for about $12 million. When Thule needed to re-renovate their building, offices, you know, these are some of our major employers in town. We sat down with them very early on. In both situations, we worked with giving them a tax incentive package, not only to keep the jobs in town, but also to expand employment. So we're very happy with that. And also, in the long term, generate more taxes for the town. So I think the current system we have is very inviting, and I don't think there's a certain regulation that wouldn't work with them, but it's hard to speculate.
You can't just say, "Yeah."
Yeah, right. We can't speculate what they want to do, obviously, but we do have an open door policy and they know how to reach me and I'm the point person, point of contact to assemble these various departments so that we can be very effective to their timing. And that's usually the biggest thing in business, is trying to do this as quick as possible.
Yeah, of course.
And make it efficient.
The property across from the Walgreens, is anything going on with that?
You know, I had heard some interest from the realtor that there's been some, possibly another food or retailer looking at it.
Yeah, I heard something too.
But again, it never reached my desk, let's just say, so it probably... The terms never got to the point where they thought it would be good to meet with the town yet, so...
Just in general, like when, you know, when there's a piece of land that's been vacant for a while, typically, do you... Do people come and meet with you? Do you hear about it before they actually sign any kind of agreement?
It really depends. I'm fortunate enough, I have a good reputation with a lot of the retailers and relationships with, a lot of realtors that'll be marketing the site. So they'll either reach out to me, send me their marketing packet, and depending on the property, they may discuss it. For instance, the property on Derby Avenue, the Movie Cars property, which is about a seven-acre parcel, it's being marketed by Tom Hill, who's a realtor. He contacted me a couple of days ago, just indicate, "Hey, we just lowered the price because we've had various discussions on that parcel and, you know, we feel that the pricing is getting closer to being in line with what the market would stand." So I do have that open dialogue with the realtors and if they so choose to call me when they're getting the listing, I usually will help market the site. I do attend a lot of the seminars that would attract those type of users. And I tell them if they can't attend, I'll bring their flyers and try to market it for them when I go to it. So that's kind of the relationship.
Just one final question. So for the duration of the Greenway Trail project, about how much of your time percentage-wise is spent dealing with that as opposed to business development type stuff?
Yeah. Well, right now, at the beginning of the prod... Really before the project started construction to now construction underway, it's taking, I would say, 50% of my time. Prior to that, maybe even more because there was a lot of items that came up before construction started that were contractual items, what have you. But once the construction started, I didn't think I was going to be so inundated with information. But being that I'm the point person for it, I get probably CC'd on at least 10 emails a day, which isn't bad. I mean, I like to be... Not that they're all directed to me per se, but just to stay in the loop.
It's good to be in the loop, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Especially when something goes wrong. And we've had a couple of small hiccups that were out of everybody's control that we addressed right away to keep the project going. And like I said, we're ahead of construction schedule right now. We're trying to stay within budget, which I'm very excited about. I hope to have a good report at the end of the 120 days of construction. But like I said, you know, it's a project that our office worked closely on, so I have no problem being involved in it. Actually, later this week, I'll be working with or meeting with the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments Representative Mark Nielsen to discuss now the future phases and how we could start the process of trying to allocate any funding if possible, like we did for the first phase. So, you know, it's not what you've done for me lately. It's like you always have to...
Yeah, right.
...do the next steps. And we're going to be trying to be proactive. And now that we have success of getting one phase of it completed, I think it'll be easier, I would hope, to now look at getting the other phases done. I think at the end of the day, people will be very appreciative of what goes down with that phase one, but it'll be short, you know? People will want to see it be completed, but at least it'll give them what... The taste of what the rest of it could be like. So we're excited about that.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, any other questions, comments from Fred?
How much of your space, if any, is left at the industrial park?
The industrial park, from my understanding of the inventory that I have, all the buildings are being utilized by users. There's some small parcels of land that are either town-owned, but they're not usable for new construction, let's just say. So that... I would love to have another amount of land to try to fill because that industrial park is alive and doing very well and houses some very good businesses, you know, high-tech businesses that are creating really high, you know, quality jobs also. Oh. Yeah.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you, Fred.
And I'm sorry I went over my eight minutes.
We'll excuse you.
Thank you.
How long did you go there?
It's 23 minutes.
That's actually pretty good for you, though. So I mean, we're all...
So...
We're all appreciative of it.
I gave it a yeoman's...
You're just finishing hello normally at the 23-minute mark, so. Thank you, Fred.
Thanks.
Elena, did you mark Al here at 7:30? Thank you. Okay, item number nine is update regarding small cities program. There'll be no update tonight. The paperwork that we had expected took substantially longer. It only came in on Friday. Rich is in the process of reviewing that and he will have an update for us on Tuesday. Tuesday the 6th, excuse me, our next meeting. Okay, item number 10, appointments. We have a stack of appointments before us. Okay, Jen Sax, Livable Communities Commission. It's a new appointment. It's until completion and there's no expiration date. Do you have a motion? Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Stained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 4-0-1. And please note Stefan's abstention. David Vanderwart, he's a fire investigator, not a fire inspector, and you will see in your handouts for correspondence the reason why. It's a new appointment. There's no term attached to that. Do you have a motion? Motion by Nicole, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. John Conroy Jr., Permanent Building Committee. It's a reappointment. It's a two-year term. It expires June 2nd, 2019. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Wayne Natzel, Permanent Building Committee. A reappointment. It's a two-year term. It expires June 2nd, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Stefan. Second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 4-1-0. Please note Nicole's vote. Alex Danke, Permanent Building Committee. Reappointment. It's a two-year term. It expires 6/2/2019. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Stanley Jackomowski, Permanent Building Committee. It's a reappointment for a two-year term. Expires June 2nd, 2019. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Mike Marsenek, Permanent Building Committee. It's a reappointment. It's a two-year term. Expires June 2nd, 2019. Motion by Nicole, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Thomas O'Neill, Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate. It is a reappointment for a four-year term. It expires May 21st, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Bob Sealy, am I saying that right? Bob Sealy. I apologize, Bob, if I mispronounced your last name. Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate. It's a reappointment. It's a four-year term and expires 5/21/21.
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, item number 11, tax refunds and abatements. The oldie but the goodie, Nicole.
The following... The following overpayment of tax payment in total of $942.69 needs to be approved for refund in accordance with the provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes dated at Seymour the 12th day of May 2017. Susan Bolan, Assistant Tax Collector.
Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Karen, second by Stefan. Just under discussion, make sure that there's no issues. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Item number 12 is transfers. We have no transfers before us this evening. Item number 13 is correspondence. We have the check register. We have a motion... Excuse me, a memo, pardon me, to the board from the Board of Fire Commissioners, which is asking us to appoint David Vanderwart as the fire inspector. And then also handed out to you tonight was an email from the fire marshal, Paul Wedowitz, asking that to be corrected from fire inspector to fire investigator based on the coursework that has been taken. We have a letter from our tax collector to myself, which I provide to the board with regards to a jeopardy tax collection for a business in town, and that information is provided. We have a thanks from Pastor La Sue to myself and to the full board for participating in the National Day of Prayer that was held on May 4th. And also since John's here, I'll thank the Legion for taking part in that ceremony as well. I particularly love the flag folding ceremony. It explains what each fold of the flag means, which is actually really nice. And last, but certainly not least, we have a letter from Stefan to the chairman and to the rest of the Livable Communities Commission stepping down from that board. As you know, we've appointed Stefan to just about every other board in the last month or so. So he had to offload one or two of them, so we'll accept his resignation for that. Well, seems the town clerk already has, so we're kind of stuck.
Too late.
And we even named his replacement, so... Okay, so that does it for correspondence. We'll move on to item number 14, which is public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Do you really want to make public comment? Step up to the microphone.
Just a reminder...
To the microphone.
Yeah. Just a reminder, Memorial Day, May 28th, 11 o'clock, bring your sneakers, first selectmen and border selectmen because you'll be walking. Karen, we have a ride for you. You're offset. Lot of new people entering into the Memorial Day Parade this year. So just a reminder, hope to see everybody there. Thanks.
Well, can you just confirm the times when you want everybody there, not when we start?
The parade starts at 11:30. The ceremonies start at 11:00. Once... I think we're going to do like a 15-minute ceremony and then shuttle you guys to the front of the parade. You'll walk and then you'll get right onto the...
Reviewing stand.
Reviewing stand, thank you.
Thank you.
And then you'll watch the rest of the parade.
Excellent.
That's it.
Perfect. Thank you, Alex.
You get there...
Town of 11.
Town of 11, yeah. There'll be a band there coming, I think, at 10:30, the high school band. I forgot the name of them. Oh, my goodness.
It's going to be Wildcats.
No, it's not the Wildcats. It's performing artists. They're going to come at 10:30 and do like a... Keep everybody entertained, why everything's setting up. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alex. Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comments? Okay, hearing no other public comment, we'll close public comment and we'll move on to selectmen's public comments and we'll start with Stefan.
Yeah, just quickly, apologies if I've already been told this, but somebody said something about the state widening Route 67 outside of Stop and Shop. Is there any truth to that?
Yes, there's been a plan that we've been working on for at least five years now. Mylon McBroom is the lead engineer for the state of Connecticut. But it's a state project, so...
Yeah.
It's going to entail a lot of work to do it, I would imagine.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, thanks. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you. Karen?
I just have a couple of things. At the last meeting I brought up, and I wish Nicole could help me out here, about the stop sign being missing at the intersection of Handfield and...
Oh, did we check on that? Did we?
I went the next morning.
And it was there.
It was already up. It looked like it'd been through World War II. Now, I don't know whether we have new signs. Did you notice?
No, because I was a little bit confused as to which...
Coming down the hill, as if you're facing Mrs. Brown's very...
So it can't be a LeBosser.
That's it.
Yeah.
And I was glad to see the sign. I'm not complaining.
I'm going to go with it was the efficiency of Public Works to get it done immediately for you, but we didn't have any new signs, so one's on order and will be put up as soon as it comes in.
They were watching.
How's that one's out? There's absolutely no truth to that statement, but how did it sound?
The other... My other complaint was... There are three posts. Two of them have stop signs on, and the other one is, is empty. Just a green metal sign, like you would put a stop sign on.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know whether it's my mistake that there shouldn't be a sign there.
So the right or left when you come out of the parking lot?
If you're facing the middle school, it's on the left.
Okay. And it's right by where that exit is, where the crossing guard would stand?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, we can take a look at it tomorrow. So there's one single green post, you're saying?
Yeah. And it's behind the other two stop signs. I mean, like I said, I'm not complaining. At least we've got two stop signs.
Right. They, they used to have the street signs on their own individual poles, but now they've been putting them on like the tops of stop signs and things like that. So that could be the case, where they did that and just didn't take the green pole out, and no one realized?
Okay.
But that's, I'm just taking a guess. So we can take a look and see what it is?
Well, I just want to say thank you to Public Works for responding so quickly.
No, there we go. It was a no-standing sign. It was a no-standing sign.
Oh, no standing.
All right. Anything else, Karen?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Al?
I just wanted to thank Public Works for the progress they're making on repairing the curbing around town that had been damaged over the winter inadvertently by Plows. The curbing just needs repairs. Seems like they're making really good progress with that. Also, I'd like to thank Parks for getting the restroom situation remedied at Gary Park. We have a lot of folks up there for baseball and soccer and using the playscape, so I'm glad that's been rectified. I'm not receiving any more emails, so I guess everything's good up there.
That's always a positive.
That's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Al. Nicole?
Thank you. I just, one thing, just want to give a shout-out to our Assistant Animal Control Officer in Seymour. I had a situation this weekend where I had some stray dogs in my yard, and she was able to, she came out on Sunday on Mother's Day and took care of the situation, found the owners, and rectified these two dogs that were, had been missing for almost two days. So I just want to thank Ashley. She did a great job, and Karen, the head ACO, just great job with the Woodbridge Animal Shelter, since we've been merged with them as the regional shelter. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Rory, anything we missed? No? Rory, anything you want to add?
The only thing, I'm just going to let the board know, we're putting in, as you know, the new carpeting, new flooring, we've talked about that, and the new furniture in the board of, in the Selectmen's office and the finance office. That project is actually going to start in some degree tomorrow night, so there's going to be a little upheaval Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in those offices. So if you have any needs or anything like that, we'll do the best we can to respond to you as quickly as we possibly can. But we won't have computers or phones, or we'll be in different offices, so people will kind of be jumbled around. So with that, since there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion...
Karen, lightning quick as always. Nicole, second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Mark the meeting closed at 8:03, and denote that it is the first time Karen has beat Anne Marie.